Fire trucks, the ladder trucks, you know. You always heard they're a million bucks. They're two million bucks.
It's crazy what's happened to.
It's kinda one of those things you wish you could invest in, cause it's good rate to return.
So anyhow.
Anything else?
Me?
Do you have anything you wanted, or just listening?
Nope, I called Shelby and I I'm uh. Wanna talk about that water business, and she said there was some outfit coming in, well, I was told that. Many months ago when I came up here, this is what goes up in my. Toilet tank upstairs. That's nice, huh? You wanna drink the water that might be coming out of the faucet? And I cleaned that toilet. Like a month, month and a half ago. Today.
Cause mine has been better since.
Did we call them when they're coming?
We're pet- yeah, we're pet- it's pending on, it's approved. But it's not approved, we're waiting for an actual engineered, certified engineered signature on it. Which is new, so we're having to jump through all this new red tape to get, it it's gonna happen. Actually, I just got.
Why does it take so many months?
Does that come out of your faucet too?
No, I don't get crud coming through the faucet.
Oh, not the crud, but the rest, yeah.
Well, right, the rest of it, yeah, it's gross. That is gross. Are your neighbors like that too?
I don't know, some of them are.
Like the water, is that what you're saying?
It it does help by my house when they flush the hyd- flush the hydrants.
That was my question, is it possible if you went down in that area? And flowed a bunch of water through it?
Absolutely, and it also helps to run your water too, some.
But when you're on the end of the loop, like I'm on the end of a loop, I can run my water all I want, it's not gonna, unless that fire hydrant at the end of the loop is flushed, it doesn't make a very difference.
And the other thing I'd like to say about the water, just so you maybe understand that it's not really that scientific in the sense that we're pumping well water out of the ground. We feed chlorine to it. For freshness and smell, whatever, it's, that's all we do, and then it goes to the tower and that's it. So there's not anything that we're, you know negligent about, or doing something different, or anything like that, it's literally just well water with a little bit of chlorine in it. So, and it's the same water that everybody else is getting.
So like Mitch is on the same line as you, and he's farther than you, but he's not having problems.
Right.
So I'm guessing he's running more water in his house?
Yeah.
Than you are?
It's the same main, it's the same water. And um.
Yeah.
I asked Shelby today, I thought maybe what's your water usage was, if that was full, if there's certain areas of your house that you're not running that much water in. If you're below the minimum, you know, it wouldn't cost you anything. Yeah. Run your water.
That's what this new um treatment plant is, or treatment is. All of this got worse after the tower was painted and cleaned, then then redone again. That's when all of this happened.
It's just water and chlorine, it's the same system that we've had in this town. For many, many, many years, forever.
You drink out of the faucets?
I do.
I buy water, so that's getting to be a real sore spot too.
So, but it, you know, just a suggestion, you know, run your water some. You know, a little, maybe that would help. And yeah, and we're gonna get that. That phosphate blend in there, and that'll.
So what that'll do is coat the lines.
It'll coat the line, but it'll also sequester the parts of the million, like the iron in it, to keep it from oxidating. So it'll do both, it'll coat your line and it'll also keep things from oxidating, so the water should be clear up a little bit, it'll it'll sit in your in your in your lines a little longer before it turns color. But it's not really treating, it's still the same water. There's no filtering or anything like that, we don't have a filter in town, it's just, it's just well water with a little chlorine. And it's all, all the mains are all integrated, so it's, everybody gets the same water.
So how long is it gonna take till these guys get here? So I talked to Dustin tonight about, finally, he just heard back from Hawkins today about finding our own engineer to sign off on it instead of them doing it. So I gave the paperwork to Dustin and he said he'll. Type something up to send to them. All that, so we. After the council approved it, we had to send the application to Department of Health with the chemical feed plan, so that. Anytime you change your water system, they have to approve it. And they denied it because they said you need a licensed engineer to sign off on the installation of it. Yeah, so that's, that's what I gave Dustin tonight, they're, he's our, they're our city engineer, so. He said they've seen that before, he'll reach out to Hawkins and.
And I've been dealing.
But this letter just came not that long ago, they, Department of Health sat on it that long. That's when, that, the Department of Health just got back to us about it. We've been wait, they're like, yeah, we're, we're waiting to do the installation, we're waiting from the um approval of Department of Health. And they didn't, they sat on it for months.
Approval from the council, approval from the NDA.
Yeah. Yep.
Just the process of it.
Well, can you come out and flush that?
Sure.
That um.
I can even check your water in your house too.
Hydrant by the, that, thank you, I would like that done.
Yeah.
Right by, it's between Janet Joseph and my house. And I saw last summer you were flushing the one up on the highway.
Right, and then down by Mitch and then down by the A frame too.
You do them all every year?
I was gonna say, they need to be all of them.
Yeah, or rotate, you know, not all of them the next time.
I don't think mine was done. Last year.
It's all the same main, but yeah, we can flush it.
I don't know, but I'm not gonna put up with this much longer, I can't, I just can't stand it. I mean, it's, it's terrible to have that crud in your, in your house. You know, like I said, I had that toilet tank totally cleaned a month and a half ago. It just sparkled, and now you got this again.
Yeah, I mean, we're pumping the water out of the ground and putting, that's the system that we got, so. And that's why we're in- integrating this new thing to help with it. But that'll be the last thing that we can do outside of building a new water plant. But yeah, I'll stop by, if that's okay with you.
Yeah.
Check your water and flush the hydrants. Go from there.
Okay.
Or tomorrow maybe, whatever, give you a call, give you a call.
Number five, park, sledding hill and park conditions.
So those pictures aren't the greatest, but um. The um. Mitch was mowing one day and he's like, we gotta do something with that part, it's awful.
It should have been done.
Yeah. Chunks of concrete from the old playground.
Not have been sand, it should have been gravel, and then on top of the gravel, you can put topsoil.
Right.
So you, it won't move, but sand is never gonna sit still, even if you put topsoil on it, it's not gonna hold.
Yeah.
Well, if I can make a point to that, it's, it's, whether it's sand or gravel or whatever, it's the shape of it too. And then maybe even where it is.
Yeah.
You know, so, cause we have to be able to maintain it.
Right.
All the way around.
Really should be out, so you can drive to the back parking lot, so then you aren't gonna run into a swing set either. And have a head injury that we're gonna have to be sued on.
Well, I think the idea with the other stuff, like the old playground. We were thinking that those old playground equipment spots were gonna be covered up with the.
Didn't they say they were gonna move the swing set closer or something at that?
No, the swing set was always gonna stay there.
Oh.
Cause those, before Moose Fest last year, those were actually just basically pits full of water. So we took that residue up or that backfill and filled them all back in the best we could. So, and we left them because we knew the sledding hill was coming in. So, you're right, you know, where are we at with it and what? I mean.
Cause weren't they putting, like putting, they were gonna put grass and everything, right?
So I reached out to Cory.
Okay.
Um after the last meeting.
Yeah.
And said, what's going on with the hill, we were told it wasn't done. Um, all the old playground equipment stuff, there's chunks of concrete needs to be cleaned up, like it was kinda left undone. And he's, all he said was, I haven't been out there, just have the guys take care of it. Like, hey, well, no, that wasn't the plan.
Well, we can't do it.
He's got some health issues, so I got all of Jaren and I'm like, this, what's going on? Can you go out to the park, take a look, tell me what you think, something's got, I mean, Moose Fest is coming.
Well, right.
I go to Moose Park, I would say six out of seven days, cause I walk my dogs out there.
Yeah.
And that hill is getting walked on, and every time they walk it, it slides down.
Ten kids up there.
Oh yeah, it's great fun.
Under the age of eight probably.
I think they tried to do something, they put them, the ropes and the stakes up there, but they're all slipping down the hill.
Right.
We get a heavy rain, we're gonna.
That sand, that sand, it's gonna be ten feet tall by the end of summer, cause it's just gonna keep going down.
Yeah, so I did talk to Jaren, he brought, he came in today, and he just said, I've been out there, I know you guys have a meeting tonight, but. All I can really tell you is we're gonna be scheduling a park board meeting. I will bring all these concerns up to everybody, we've kinda been waiting on Cory's health and stuff, but. He said, I'll tell everybody and we'll try, I mean, we'll just let them know that we'll work on it and come up with a plan. Cause I said, you can't just tell the city guys to just fix it and finish it, like.
How it's gonna work.
No, I mean, you've got to have plans you brought to us, that, you know, for an end game. I mean.
Well, can we just tell them we need something to be happening like come July meeting for an update?
Yeah, that's Jaren's plan, yeah. Yeah.
And they would include the plan with the hill, with the council too, so they can say, no, we want it this way, no, we want it that way.
Yeah.
It's got to have some topsoil and some grass.
So the only, so the, the biggest thing right now, Jaren's gonna try, talk to Troya, cause he did that. And now he's done doing stuff for the city apparently. So, we just need to figure out where everybody's at and if they can come to an agreement on.
Cause I did, cause I talked to my son-in-law with whatever, but I said, what, what did he have to do, and he said that they're gonna need some gravel in there. Which would help, cause the sand, it's not gonna pack, and it's gonna, right, you need something to pack in there. Even some, like he, clay, he said even if you put clay in there to pack, pack it. The clay would help.
Right.
Because this is not gonna, like, a pile of sand is not gonna hold.
Right.
So Park and Rec paid for this, right?
Yeah.
They paid for it to be done? So they're gonna pay for it to be completed, or is, are they implying it's already?
I don't know, that's, that, that's up, they'll have to, yeah.
Well, they paid, they.
Park Board meets.
They paid Troy already for his job.
Yeah, right, thousand dollars for the way it sits right now. Yep.
Nine thousand dollars?
Ten.
Ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, so I don't know, I, but I just said, there's a lot of people involved and everyone kind of is, has their own questions. That's, why don't you guys meet and basically just say something has to be done?
Mm-hmm.
It can't be left the way it is, so.
It's a great idea.
Right.
Like a Sunday hill's a great idea, it's good entertainment, we just have to finish it.
Yeah, well, and like I told Jaren, I said, when you guys did this new playground equipment, has it been two summers already? Um, in less than three weeks of the installation, there was grass growing already because you wanted it to look nice for Moose Fest. So why would you tear out all the old playground equipment and leave it the way it is, like? That should have been grass seeded and, you know, fix it. Like you rush to fix the new one, or you know, build up the new one to look nice.
And we can, we can.
Just leave it the way it is.
We can help with some of that small micro stuff too, you know, the ruts, you know, the dead patches, some of the accessible blocks and stuff. But I mean, the hill is.
The biggest question is some of the biggest chunks.
To be a mo- a mess.
The biggest chunks of like concrete and stuff from the old equipment is right next to the hill.
Yeah, that's.
So if they, if they do have a plan to reshape it and, you know, round it better. It would cover up half of that, where you wouldn't have to.
Probably.
Well, and.
That's why it's like, why, why spend the time and money to clean that up, if it's gonna be covered anyways.
And if that's, they're gonna keep that swing set there, they're gonna have to put something on it, cause it's literally gonna break somebody's neck.
I mean, they could maybe move the foundation boards, as far as what'll break your neck there. But I, my understanding is we're not allowed to move the swing set.
Well, I'm just saying, somebody is going to break their neck, break an arm.
Unfortunately, the hill should have been turned here. I, it is what it is, it's there now, well, it might, if we get enough rain, it might have to be reconstructed.
I don't think there's enough room for a slope on the backside with the road, road there.
But if you turn it, I, I, well, it would have been better going that way than it is going the way it's going now. Cause they're gonna hit a hole or a swing set or a building.
Yeah, can you let us all know when that park meeting is gonna be?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I think the placement was whatever.
I think it should have been all the way past, like where the, like where the far parking lot is.
Let's see, they're gonna use the softball.
Well, they can use it, you can, there's still a back, you can still, cause I walk all the way to almost that edge.
Right.
You could have had it, and there's still plenty of parking there, they could keep, could.
They'll have to figure it out. Um, the only other thing for Adam is the city vehicles. I didn't get a single bid.
Really?
Can't even give them away.
Right?
Well, we can, but we might actually.
Right. So then we just do that.
So yeah, he's just wondering what, what he can do.
Yeah.
The one was donated, so I don't know what you guys' thoughts are on that.
I would just go get rid of them like you planned, we tried to sell them. I don't know, it's my opinion, I guess.
Well, yeah, we tried.
Yeah.
Trying to get some garbage for him.
Right?
That's it then.
Could have thrown it out then.
What's that? Between the motion?
Yeah, we could, that'd be.
Okay.
Good, good.
Thanks, Adam.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks guys.
We don't have to discuss leaf pickup?
Okay.
Because I'm out of reality. And there was pieces of equipment that were like.
Did the three hundred thousand dollars scare you?
No, oh, I feel like they're like twenty or thirty thousand.
Oh.
But clearly.
Did you find any, or?
Well, like online, but they're so expensive, I'm like, we can't do that for. No, that's what is disgusting, I hate it. I want the city to come pick my leaves up for me.
You know, some schools have the.
Those big vacuums that shh, the city comes by and you shove it all to the edge?
I saw I gotta do it in deeper, I'm like, that's amazing, and we need that, until I googled it more, and I thought, huh.
Uh, we need a lot more than a leaf vacuum, yeah.
Well, it's like a big truck thing, it was, yeah.
It's basically a big vacuum.
We're Carlos Silver, not people, so. We can't, correct.
Have a good night.
See ya.
See ya.
Okay, I'm gonna try, bike path options.
Oh, so, okay, Ashley Anderson. Hannah Solins. Whoever else have kids down there. Um, we're just wondering if we have any ideas or options on anything we can do on that street to the city limit sign. As far as an option for their children to safely ride by, log, boat, bike, scooter, whatever, from home to town. Cause apparently people drive crazy and there's not really a shoulder or much.
That's where they need speed bumps.
I did tell her, and then I think you said we ordered some.
Now put speed bumps on my road.
It's a county road.
County roads, therefore the county has to deal with it.
So, I did bring Shelby some information today. Um, that was Northwest, what?
Regional development.
Yeah, so there is some funding.
Okay.
Out there through Northwest Regional Development that. I was talking with Shelby today about possibly maybe we could find a grant or something we could apply for to help out with that.
So, and that, is that arguing, or is that all county, cause it's your?
Well, it would be up to the city to apply for it, but I will get you some more information.
Yeah, just to see what options are there.
Some of the packet, and so there's some contacts there, because I know Rosa just got a pile of money out of them, you know, so.
And it's bike path specific kinda?
No, this is just general, everything. Like he brought it in to talk about like the, the meals on wheels stuff, they, they need some help, so, but it's the same. It's the same company, yeah, they just probably have different.
Okay.
Contacts for different, you know, park stuff or whatever.
Yeah, so you, are you?
Yeah, well, I'll talk, I'll look for a little more information.
Just so I can let them know what we.
But there, there's some avenues out there where there is some funding, state funding, you just have to kinda look for it a little bit.
Cause I think, would it be, um. Whichever, whatever, um, street it is, well, it's eleven, but like Brett's building, that crew down there. Is that something where if we were saying, hey, we want a bike path, can we do it in a couple of different areas of the city?
It all depends on what.
There is.
You know, like, along Highway eleven, that would be strictly right state of Minnesota, I think. You know, and they did put the bike path on the one side. There is a bike path alr- already, yeah.
Since then we did it, that one side just had a bigger.
Yeah, the south side has a bike path there.
Yeah.
Right. Highway eleven.
Eleven, by your house, yeah.
I forgot that that's.
Yeah.
It's also by meter reading, so I can go slow.
So, but, I'll look into a little more information on that, and the other thing that I wanted. I'm gonna talk to the highway department about, if you guys are gonna pave over here this year. We should probably check out the height of those culverts on those streets that you are gonna pave to make sure they're all. At the right height, so that. I know there's some crossings in there that hold back water, but.
Yeah, we talked, are you talking about Lincoln and?
Well, the one by the elevator that's gonna be tarred.
Oh.
You know, that ditch along there, if you guys are tarring the side streets, they better do a survey of those culverts.
That was part of their drainage.
Part of the deal, yeah.
Yeah, they're gonna read, yeah, weren't they talking about?
The drain tile.
Yep, but the culverts that are there, they need to suck out, or clean them out.
Yeah, it's not part of that bid though. That, that's not part of the bid.
I thought the city was able to do that.
Yeah, that's, we, be our street, our right of way, we can, we can have them get out. Yeah, we can, but now that.
Dean needs to remove the crossing he put in.
Correct, right, so I mean, that's our right of way, we can do that anytime, just maintenance.
Sure, okay.
But that wasn't part of it.
It was brought up though during all the discussion.
Right, but there is the drain tile on harding.
But now with the county doing that, have you noticed, have you been down there and seen how nicely now that those ditches are?
Oh, no.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so that'll really be.
So once we get ours cleaned out, that water will be gone, guaranteed, we just need to get them moved out.
Well, yeah. So.
Well, do we think we can have, will the city have time to do that this year to clean those out?
Have to see that. Do they know how?
I don't know, I mean.
No, we'd have to, we'd have to get somebody, but obviously.
My ass in a backhoe.
We, we, we'd want, you know, we want.
I don't know about it.
We'd set the, give us a, a layout on it.
Be on green.
Yeah, they'd have to do the survey shots and what would have to be how much here and there to get it through.
Oh, sure, yeah, right.
Yeah, but then we could put it out for bid or quotes or.
Yeah.
Whatever we wanted to do after that.
Doesn't Nathan Cole or Pearl do that?
Um, I forgot, kind of trail property. Um, the England, right, is that his name? So, his neighbors are very upset.
Thank you, Brad.
Yep, have a good day.
About his yard and the shit it's in, and now moving in a house. That is too big for the foundation that is there.
Which neighbor?
What?
Which neighbor's upset?
From what I understand, all of them are discussing it.
Other neighbor's yard?
No, 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 across the street, where they're nice, yeah, um.
Okay, I lost, where are we at?
Campana Trail.
Campana Trail.
Paul England's, can I say that?
Oh, yeah, it's public information.
Paul England.
Is that his name?
It would be across from Solins.
Next to Peter Nap, across from Solins, yes, his house burned down on fire the one year.
Yeah.
So then he had like the foundation, whatever, a bunch of stuff was buried or something, and now Troy moved the house in for him. That's like just chilling there, but clearly it's not.
Is it on the foundation yet?
It wasn't yesterday when I drove by.
See, we talked about all that.
Yes, we did.
I mean, that was all, yeah.
It was gonna be put on the foundation.
Cause it would fit and it's.
I remember it sitting there, we, we looked at the scrapbook and photos and it was all good.
Yeah, it was a building permit.
Yeah, it was a building permit.
Yes.
Well, is it?
I don't know.
Is it not adhering to the building permit?
The, I feel they should maybe check it out, um, and then the cleanliness of his yard, they were wondering if we can send another letter, which I did take pictures. And it looks a lot cleaner than it's ever looked, but like Ashley said, she was like, well, the lilac bushes are growing, so I can't see it.
On powder?
Right now, yeah, but it's like he cleaned it and just pushed everything into the trees.
The, that's because that's outside of city limits, that's county.
Okay, yeah, that's what you had said, yes, so, I don't know if there's anything that we can do, or just.
They need to complain to the county then, it's outside of, it's not, it's not city limits anymore.
So the, the house isn't either in city limits?
No, 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 just the junk.
Needs to do what he said in his building permit.
Yes, he does.
But the junk is a separate issue, and that's cleaned up the same property.
County when, like Naps Land goes way back there.
And that's county, it's county, yeah, it's a small, my property, the barn, it's a very small section in the city.
Okay, so that would be like, okay, yeah, right.
So who do we have to have look and see if the building permit's doing what it's supposed to be doing?
Well, if it isn't set on there yet, I mean, you have to, we probably wanna wait and see where he puts it, and then he does with it.
How, right.
Right, I mean.
I didn't realize they'd moved it in.
I didn't either.
When did they move it in?
It's just the other day, like.
Cause I was gonna say, I was just by there.
Thursday, actually, last week or so, it was Thursday, last week.
Must be gonna.
Yeah, I would assume they're gonna do something, but yesterday, when I drove by, it was still just sitting on like the beam things or whatever.
Supposed to go on the old foundation.
Yeah, and maybe they just haven't said it.
That's what it said.
Yeah, no, it's literally sitting next to it.
Troy was, he, they did a deal.
Yeah.
Troy moved his house and he gets Troy's land over by the.
The other way around.
His land.
Yes.
Yeah.
But.
So I don't know, but we might keep an eye on it, cause I guess the neighbors are like, oh yeah, another ice storm, which is weird.
Yeah, but you remember, he was gonna, he, he gonna paint it.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
I still remember the whole conversation.
I told Ashley, I said, do you realize that he sat in the living room there?
Fair is fair.
Yeah, as a child, like, we can't take it from him, so, but it is messy, and I don't know. Naps and like Jeff Tanner's, all of them are, I don't know if.
I wonder if send letters to all of them.
I was gonna say Jeff should talk, maybe Troy wants Jeff's.
Property.
I don't know what Jeff wants or what, but, like Brian Bitter was another one that come and complained to me about it, and he, he bought. Who's house, who lived there? He's next to Carrie, and isn't that one of your relatives, they're Westsens, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, what's the house next to them? Brian built the garage or the shed or whatever.
Pete Wells?
No.
No.